Well, welcome everyone to the November 17th, 2020 Ogden City Council meeting. Please let the record reflect that all council members are present and I will be reading my chair's determination. So this is the council chair determination to hold electronic meetings without anchor location. In accordance with Utah Code 5232074, I have determined that conducting meetings of the Ogden City Council with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present due to the infectious nature and potentially dangerous health effects of contracting the COVID-19 virus. This determination is based on the following. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention, or the CDC, has determined that COVID-19 is easily spread between or among people who are in close contact with each other through airborne respiratory droplets and may be spread by people who are nonsymptomatic. The state of Utah has developed a COVID-19 transmission index through a collaborative effort amongst state and local health officials, elected officials, the hospital industry and business leaders. As of November 1st, 2020, Weber County was in the high transmission category, limiting group gatherings to 10 people or less. Based on the foregoing, all public meetings, including work sessions and meetings of the redevelopment agency, will be held electronically through November 30th, 2020. Information on how to connect the electronic public meetings will be posted on each agenda. The public may comment during the electronic meeting and public hearings on agenda items designated for input or during the general public comment period. Written public comments may also be submitted through the following electronic options. Telephonic message at 801-629-8158. Public comment submission form at ogdencity.com-publicinput or email at citycouncil@ogdencity.com. And this statement was issued and became effective November 2nd, 2020. So now invite Vice Chair Blair to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would ask all those who are with us and all council members if they would please rise and repeat the pledge of allegiance after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thanks, everyone. We are really excited this evening to be recognizing honorary mayor of Christmas Village, or mayors, I should say. And I also, after this is read, we'd love to invite the committee chair as well to make a statement if they'd like. So I'd like to invite Councilmember Nadolski to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate the opportunity to do this. I was really excited when asked if I would read this because I've made no secret to Jeff and Beth Furtin that they're two of my favorite people in Ogden. They are, they really are the epitome of Ogden in the way that they give, the way that they serve to others, the energy that they put into Ogden. So I'm really thrilled to to see that they are being suggested for the, for this recognition. So, and I'm excited to declare November 28th, 2020 as Jeffrey and Beth Furton Day in Ogden City. I'll read the proclamation. And whereas calling Ogden home since 2004, Jeffrey and Beth Furtin have a deep love for the city. They epitomize the Ogden spirit and their contributions to our community are invaluable. Jeffrey and Beth have two daughters, Livy and Mia, who, side note, I have gotten to coach alongside Jeff and they're awesome kids. Their children are their greatest joy. And whereas Jeffrey and Beth are business partners and owners of Daily Rise Coffee. In 2004, their company's first drive-through location opened in Ogden. They chose Ogden because they wanted to start their business in an emergent city and they strongly believed in the direction it was heading. Today, Daily Rise Coffee has multiple locations throughout northern Utah. And whereas Jeffrey and Beth have been actively involved in the Ogden community. They love going to the outdoor activities and participating in service opportunities. Jeffrey sits on the Ogden Downtown Alliance Board and is currently a member of the Gold Foundation Board. While Jeffrey is volunteering, Beth works tirelessly to keep their businesses going. She ensures that operations are running smoothly and is the driving force behind the bright and cheerful baristas at the windows of their stores. And whereas Christmas Village is a family tradition for the Furtons. One of their fondest memories is the magical twinkle in their daughter Livy's eye the first time she saw Santa in the Christmas Village parade. For years, Jeffrey and Beth donated coffee and hot cocoa to breakfast with Santa. They thoroughly enjoy being a part of this event, which gives them the opportunity to meet and interact with members of the Ogden community. And whereas we are grateful for the opportunity to highlight Jeffrey and Beth's legacy in Ogden City. They are staples in our community and their service and influence have left a lasting impact on our city. Now therefore, Mayor Michael B. Caldwell and the Ogden City Council do hereby proclaim November 28th, 2020 as Jeffrey and Beth Furton Day in Ogden City. And declare that, declare them the honorary mayors of Christmas Village for 2020. We express our sincere gratitude for their valuable contributions to our community and encourage everyone to join us in honoring Jeff and Beth by visiting and enjoying Ogden's Christmas Village. And after taking action here, we will, this will have been passed and adopted the 17th day of November, 2020. And with that said, Chair, I will make a motion that we adopt this joint proclamation as read.
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Nadolski and a second by Councilmember Lopez to adopt the proclamation. All in favor? Any opposed? Fantastic. Yay! Everybody's, normally there would be a big uproar in council chambers and we would shake everybody's hand and take a photo. We're just so excited to welcome you and your whole family. And we'd love, if you'd like to make any statements, feel free.
Thank you, guys. We're absolutely honored to be recognized as the mayor of Christmas Village this year. It really is a special place in Ohio. Thank you, Beth, for the great introduction and for the whole council and mayor staff and for the city.
Thank you. Mayor Cogo, would you like to say something? I saw you pop up.
I'd just say as the mayor of Christmas Village, you get all the complaints about cold, hot chocolate and overflowing garbage cans. Happy to pass that off. And I'm honored to have you a part of.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your patience to our community.
Chair, Chair, can I just say one more thing about the Furtons? That proclamation, it really is modest as to the impact that they make in Ogden. And I can, I can say that with full honesty and sincerity because they make that impact for me, for my family. That they are at everything, they show up at everything and they give everything that they can and everything that they've got. And their kids are, you two girls are just so much fun to, to coach. And I love coaching with your dad, I love serving with your mom and your dad. And I look forward to watching you two grow up in Ogden. And you guys really are one of my, you guys are like my favorite couple in Ogden. It just, it just doesn't get any better than the energy that you guys bring to everything. So thank, thanks for all of that. And a huge thank you to taking all of those burdens off the mayor for a day like that.
I would just add too, though, the most competitive coaching business told me a number of times, the games that matter the most to him are against you guys. He stresses him out more than anything else he's ever done.
That's insane. I coach with Jeff in basketball, but I coach against Jeff in softball. But when we play the Ogden Reds, man, I'll tell you what. Thanks for giving the big man a break for one night, though. The big man needs a break every now and again.
Yeah, hey, it's an honor and thanks for allowing us to do that.
Would any other council members like to make comment? Thank you so much. And I wanted to invite the committee chair, Monte Stewart, if you'd like to say anything about Christmas Village this year. I know that it's gonna be a little different this year, but we all have our sweatshirts on to celebrate. And is it still opening on Thanksgiving weekend? And what's it gonna be like?
Yeah, so Chair Chaburka, I'm not the actual committee chair, but I would love to say thank you to the Furtons. One of the really nice things about Ogden is every year when the committee does discuss honorary mayors, there's so many names that come to mind. And we were really excited to have this family as our honorary mayors this year. Christmas Village is going to look a little bit different this year, but we will be turning the lights on the day after Thanksgiving with not, you know, without the big gala. But there's a number of cottages and delights for people to come down and see and, and to celebrate this season.
That's wonderful. I apologize. I know that you probably do much more than a committee chair would ever do, Monte. So thanks so much for your help. Yeah, I hope that everybody goes out and enjoys it. Mask up, of course, you know, stay socially distanced from other households, of course. But I'm so excited to see those lights happening as I've been driving by and seeing them all get put up. It really, I think, is gonna lift some spirits in a time that's a little bit of a drudgery for some. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Wonderful. So now we have the common consent agenda. We have two items on this, the fiscal year 2021 budget amendment for utility revenue bonds proceeds for setting a public hearing for December 1st, 2020, and the Community Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee, the approving of appointments.
Chair, if nobody has any questions, I'd love to make a motion to adopt the common consent items.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Lopez and a second, I believe, by Councilmember White, but I know Councilmember Hyer will get one later. And this is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now we have a public hearing and I invite Lisa Staub, the Ogden City Controller, and Sarah Stoffers, the Business Information Senator Director, to talk with us, give a presentation about the CARES Act funding. And then we will have a public hearing on the action items.
Thank you, Chair Chaburka, council members. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. The, the presentation that we're giving regards a budget ordinance in the amount of $6,612,850. A resolution to adopt an interlocal agreement with Weber County in the amount of $4.3 million and a resolution to modify the CARES Grant Program Guidelines. Let me share my screen with you. All right. Can you see that? Okay. Oh, wait. Can you see that? Okay.
Thank you.
The budget action before you in the ordinance is to appropriate $2,312,000 in COVID money received by the city from the state of Utah and an additional $4.3 million received by the, by the city through Weber County through an interlocal agreement. The COVID funding that the council has approved in past actions totals 8.1 million dollars, just under 8.2 million dollars. The city has entered into an interlocal cooperative agreement with Weber County to fund COVID business grants in the amount of $3 million. The action before you in the interlocal addendum to the agreement is to use an additional $4.3 million in funding from Weber County to again fund nonprofit and business grants with COVID funds. The city has received just over 5 million from the state of Utah so far and has divided that between city expenditures and into the business grant program. Here is just a summary of funding provided by the state of Utah in the amount of $7.5 million and from the county in the amount of $7.3 million. We received the state funding in three awards. The first $2.5 million was funded with the adopted budget. The council took action in September to adopt the second tranche of funding of $2.5 million. And this last tranche of $2.3 million is the action, is included in the action before you this evening. Just again, if the council adopts this budget proposal, total CARES Act budget will total $14.8 million. Of that, Weber County is contributing $7.3 million to business and nonprofit grants. And Ogden City is contributing just over $4 million of, the city's $7.5 million to business and nonprofit grants. Here's just a summary of what the city has awarded so far in business grants. We've divided this into nonprofit and small businesses. We've given 44, we've awarded 44 nonprofit grants in the amount of $3.3 million with an average award of 76, 657. And 190 small businesses in the amount of $6.3 million with an average award of 33, 378. After this budget action, there would be approximately $1.6 million remaining in funds that could be awarded to business, to small, small businesses and nonprofits. Excuse me. The interlocal agreement with Weber County requests that we earmark at least $500,000 more for nonprofits. And then the rest may be granted to small businesses through the Ogden CARES Program. The city funding, I think we disclosed it up here in an earlier, earlier slide, of $3.4 million of the CARES money that is being used for city purposes is outlined. Here are all of the, just a quick summary list of all of the internal city applications that we have approved to use CARES funding. A large portion is going to IT purposes to improve connectivity capabilities and also hazard pay for public safety, fire and police. This list is in your packet and you are welcome to ask for more information on any of these, these, these projects that have been approved. I just wanted to highlight, excuse me, the public safety hazard pay program. The city administration enacted a hazard pay policy. Police hazard pay policy is 350 per hour for street time, street hours, so hours spent on the street. 477,000 has been paid out already. And the additional, we're estimating an additional 293,000 to December 30th. 136 employees were included in the first payout with an average hazard pay of $3,400. Fire hazard pay program is a hazard pay premium of 250 per hour for shifts in emergency services. 109 employees were benefited in the first hazard pay distribution, a total of 397,000. And an average to those employees of $3,600. And we're estimating another maybe 250 will be needed to December 30th. And then Sarah Meese is here to talk about the, the modification, the resolution that is modifying the Ogden CARES Grant Program Guidelines. So I'll, I'll just turn the time over to her.
Thank you, Lisa. Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Chaburka and council members. We have before you tonight a new program guideline for an Ogden CARES nonprofits grant program. This will sound a little bit familiar from today's work session. But basically, we're looking at how we can provide additional funding to nonprofits in the community under the CARES Grant Program. Just for a little background on this, as you've seen from Lisa's slides, the city has been making grants to nonprofits under our existing Ogden CARES Grant Program with about $3.37 million in approved grants for nonprofits. Those nonprofit grants have been funded through a really great partnership between the city and Weber County. However, we, we've seen that the needs of nonprofits in our community have not fully been met. Part of that is because our Ogden CARES Program was initially focused on for-profit businesses and then we adapted it for nonprofits. But another major component of that is that with the, the growing impact of COVID-19, a lot of the nonprofits in the community have new and emerging needs that are really critical as they try to respond to COVID-19. Lisa, do you mind going to the next page? So the program guidelines are just intended to help us put additional funding out to those nonprofits to meet those needs. The program would provide additional funding to nonprofits that were previously determined eligible by Ogden City or that are determined eligible by Weber County that still have unmet financial needs due to COVID-19. With this guideline, the maximum grant amount would go up to $500,000 and that would include prior grant award amounts. We don't anticipate that we'll be able to make many, if any, awards of that size. Most of them will likely be much lower. But we wanted to provide the flexibility to respond to some of those critical needs as we need to. The program guidelines also define some evaluation criteria that are a bit more specific to our nonprofits. So we'll be looking at the type of services the nonprofits provide, the financial impact and need that they have due to COVID-19. We'll be looking at the public revenues that they generate or the cost reductions that they create through the services that they provide. And finally, we'll be looking at the, the number of employees and average wages that those nonprofits have. So just to outline a couple of the key differences from the Ogden CARES Grant Program that we've been running with so far, there are higher funding maximums in this Ogden CARES nonprofits program. And we've modified the evaluation criteria a bit to be more tailored to nonprofits. And our goal with the, the nonprofits program is still to here in keeping with the, the guidance for the federal CARES Act funding.
There, I have a quick question. I was wondering, I know one of the challenges, and I mean, it doesn't, it's not, it doesn't seem like a challenge to maybe business that wouldn't have similar situation, but I know lots of not-for-profits might have sort of a a fund that they have that they keep in reserve for hard times. And I mean, obviously, COVID is a really hard time. And in this criteria, how is that kind of reserve fund considered? Do they need to spend down all of their reserves in order to qualify or how does that work?
No, so the program is not necessarily based on shortfall like it was at the start. So we're not looking at expenses compared with the funding that they have available to cover those expenses. We're more looking at the impact, the financial impacts of COVID-19 and trying to provide our funding to help respond to that. So even if they do have a reserve fund, if we can see that they have expenses that they've been struggling to cover because their normal revenues or income are down, we can still consider that.
Great. Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council members?
I have a, just a, a comment. I've had a couple of nonprofits reach out to me and tell me how much both Sarah Stoffers and Sarah Meese have meant to them as far as being able to get funding, you know, just in this really hard time. And so shout out to the rock stars in our, you know, our group because, you know, in other areas and other cities, you know, this is a gap and they recognized it and they figured it out. And so it's not just me saying you're rock stars, but others in the community really believe that and really have wanted you to know that you guys are making a big difference in their little world. So thank you so much for figuring this out.
Thanks, Councilmember White, and I think also just all the other partners at the city, from finance to legal. Everybody's been kind of all hands in on this effort and we're very pleased to have the opportunity to get those grants out in the community.
That's a very fast turnaround and complicated to navigate, that's for sure. Any other comments before we go to the public hearing? And one thing I, sorry, I asked for comments when I started talking, but one thing I neglected to mention was that Councilmember Hyer did recuse himself from this item. So he left the meeting when we started discussing and he'll come back later. Now, any other comments or questions? Great. Well, I'd be happy to open the public hearing. Brandon, would you mind helping to explain to the attendees how they might participate?
Not at all. Thank you, Chair. If you would like to participate in the public hearing, you can only do so if you're joining us via Zoom. And it looks like everyone who is joining us via Zoom is not on your telephone. So you would use the raise hand feature, which I believe has been, yes, it has been enabled. Okay, just good to double check that. So yeah, raise your hand using the, the raise hand feature within the, the application and we will go from there.
I just would like to reiterate that this would be only on this topic. So it's about the CARES Act grant funding. There will be an opportunity for general public comments at the end of the meeting. So we welcome you. If you just state your name as Brandon said, and then just take three minutes. I did see a hand up before. Oh, there's a hand. Great.
Priscilla M., the time is yours. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Priscilla. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, great. I just had one question. Do we know how many more nonprofits still need this funding? Are they currently applying or do we have any nonprofits that have not received this funding? That was just my own, my question.
Sure. And what we'd like you to do, Priscilla, if you have any other statements or questions, go ahead and ask them and then we'd be happy to. But for that, we aren't taking up your time.
That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure if Sarah or Lisa, if you'd like to respond to that?
Sure, I can respond to that one. So the program guideline you have before you tonight is more focused on providing additional funding to those nonprofits who may have already received an Ogden CARES grant or that have otherwise been determined eligible by Weber County. And the reason for that is primarily the timing and the limited funds that we have remaining. We're, we're trying to make sure those funds get out to some of the, the high-impact nonprofits in our community that provide essential services such as housing or education. And we have been working closely with our partners at the county as well as United Way to try to make sure that we're reaching all of those really high-impact nonprofits.
I believe in the packet, there was a number, was it 44? I'm just doing it off the top of my head, but there was, there is a number in the packet too of how many had received it before.
That's correct. So we've made, we've approved 44 awards to nonprofit organizations. And then outside of the Ogden CARES Grant Program, Weber County has also been providing CARES funds to some of the really big institutions and nonprofits in the community, like the school districts, hospitals, and some of those.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any more hands for the comment period. Would anybody like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing, Chair. Second.
All right, you are tying with everybody tonight, Councilmember White. Um, we have a motion by Councilmember Nadolski, and a second by Vice Chair Blair to close the public hearing on favor.
All right.
May opposed? Thank you. And if there's no other discussion or questions, I'd be happy to entertain some motions. It looks like we have three of them.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we adopt proposed ordinance twenty twenty dash five six.
I second it.
So the motion by Councilmember Nadolski and a second by Councilmember Stevens to adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty-six. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nadolski?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Chaburka?
Aye. And that passes. Thank you all.
Chair, I'll, uh, make a motion to adopt proposal solution twenty twenty dash thirty-one.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Lopez and a second by Councilmember Nadolski to adopt, uh, resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-one. This is also a roll call vote.
Councilmember Nadolski?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Chaburka?
Aye, and that passes.
One more to go, if anybody's up for it.
I propose that we adopt, uh, proposed resolution twenty twenty, uh, dash thirty-two.
Second. The motion by Councilmember Stevens and a second by Councilmember White to adopt proposed resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-two. This is also a roll call vote.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nadolski?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Chaburka?
Aye, and that passes. Well, thank you all so much for your hard work on that. Next up, um, we invite Mayor Caldwell to talk with us a little bit about the appointment of a Management Services Director.
You might want to invite Rich back in.
Yes, I'm planning on. Thank you.
Let me know when you're ready to go.
Thank you. He's on his way. Thank you.
Councilman Haire, welcome back.
Thank you.
So it's my great honor to, uh, present to you. The recommendation we have for our new Management Services Director, Mara Brown. She's been an amazing employee of the city in so many regards. And as we heard last week, I think she's gonna exceed on all levels of expectation. And, um, I, I don't know what questions you have and what you want from, from me. Other than to present you who we think is going to be a, a great representative and an administrative person in, in the community.
Thank you, Mayor Caldwell. Um, Mayor, would you like to say anything?
Sure, I, I just wanted to say, um, thank you, um, thank you Chair Chaburka, members of the council, and thank you to the mayor. And, and Mark Johnson, um, for, for the support and the, the confidence and, and trust in me. And I, I did want to say that, uh, I've been with the city for, um, almost fourteen years in the position of Deputy City Attorney. And my, uh, most consistent internal client over this time has been the Management Services Department. And I've worked very closely with the directors in that department, um, starting when Mark Johnson was the director when I first started, um, at Ogden City. And working with all of the, uh, division managers. Uh, we have a very strong Department of Management Services. Uh, Lisa Stout is our comptroller who has presented, uh, often and is here this evening. Randy Johnson, the treasurer, she's also the deputy, um, uh, Department Director. And, uh, and she presents before you and the Recorder's Office, Human Resources. And so it's just an extremely talented department. Uh, and I, I'd be very excited to have the opportunity to, um, you know, continue working for the city in more of a management and policy role. I also wanted to acknowledge, uh, that, um, you know, that, that there's a lot of, it's a steep learning curve. But I'm really hoping that with my experience that I can just jump right in and, um, get a lot of work started. I, I'm also humble and I am a person who listens and learns before, before I act. And I will be looking forward to, to learning from all of the, all the staff in the department and from, from others. In the administration and from my peers and from you all and, um, other, other colleagues. And I would, um, I'm just grateful to be able to move forward and work for Ogden City in a new capacity.
I'm happy that your busiest client wasn't the administration. So, thank you for saying where you, you were the most busy.
Great. Well, yeah, we're, we're very excited to welcome you and, um, have all the faith that it's gonna be a great appointment. That's my own opinion, anyway. Any other comments, or would we like to, um, propose a motion?
Chair, I'd be happy to make a motion, if you're ready for one.
I am.
I would, uh, make a motion then that we, um, make the appointment of Mayor A. Brown. As the Management Services Director for Ogden City, effective January first, twenty twenty-one.
I second it.
The motion by Councilmember Haire and a second by Councilmember Stevens to appoint Mayor Brown. And this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember White?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Haire?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nadolski?
Methodically, aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Of course, yes.
Chair Chaburka?
Aye, and that passes. Congratulations, Mayor. We would all be cheering and shaking hands. We're in the.
Thank you very much. It's, it's going to be an honor. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mayor. Well, well, well earned.
Thanks, Whit. Uh, Ted, can I say a few words?
Please.
Um, I want to welcome Mayor, uh, to this opportunity and, and her to the min, to the administration. But also I'd like to thank Greg Buxton for his service. I think he has brought some expertise and, and he's been very important in a lot of the projects that are happening throughout the city. And, uh, you know, I just wanna. In the city and for his assistance and for his service, and also for making Ogden a better place. And so Greg, uh, I appreciate, uh, what you've done for Ogden. And thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Sure, I have a, a couple of comments. Um, you know, Mara, last week, uh, when we were discussing your appointment. Um, a few words came up and I just, I want to reiterate that, them to you, um, and, and to the general public. Because I think they're really important. Um, qualified, listens, is a community member, um, trustworthy, respected. Um, and my favorite is unflappable. And, um, I, because of those words, you're gonna be a great leader. You're a great mentor already to many of us. And I also, um, and, and to point out that you're one of the few women that have, uh, made it to a cabinet level. And so, um, and, and for many years, not, not just in, in, uh, Mayor Caldwell's administration. So I appreciate, um, what you're doing. And, um, I know that there's a lot of individuals that really are going to, uh, love having you be their boss. And we're gonna love having you be, um, at our meetings a lot more.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember White. I appreciate those words.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to congratulate her for, I say well-earned, that it's a hard-earned opportunity for her. You've worked your butt off, um, to have this opportunity, Mara, and everything that, uh, Marcia said, I absolutely agree with. And was really excited to, uh, check into the meeting tonight. Um, for a number of reasons, but most importantly for, uh, honoring the Fertins and honoring you. So congratulations, and I'm really thrilled, thrilled to have you, uh, i- in that seat. It's really important to have you there.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, thanks again so much, um, for your service.
Okay, well, I really look forward to it, and I, and I do appreciate, um, Greg Buxton and many of the projects that, that he started. You know, will be continuing, especially, um, his expertise in the Fleet and Facilities Department. Um, I really appreciated really every day working with the, the City Attorney's Office, and we have, we have a great team. Um, a lot of camaraderie, and I, I really expect that, you know, my working relationships, um, with, with that department and all the departments will continue. Um, and so I'm just excited to get started. Thank you again. Appreciate it for everything.
Thank you. With its. Now it's time for public comments, um, and this is an opportunity to address the council regarding any concerns or ideas about any topic. And we just asked that you be considerate to limit your comments to three minutes. Um, participants will state their name for the record, and Brandon will reiterate again how you might participate.
Thank you, Chair. To participate in the, uh, public comments portion of the meeting, you need to be joining us via Zoom and use the raise hand feature. Found at the bottom of your screen. So with that, we'll wait for raised hands and, uh, go from there. David Farrell, the time is yours. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name for the record.
Love to take yourself off mute, Dean Farrell.
Thank you, Angela. I appreciate that. Um, so for those who don't know, I'm the Dean of Engineering Applied Science and Technology at Weber State. And I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about HB four eleven. Um, unfortunately, the conversation didn't really get going, but, um, I did look exhaustively at the packet. And I think I can tell you a little bit about the position from Weber State's perspective. So about a week and a half ago, the president of the university, our chief financial officer, our experts in energy met about, uh, to basically, uh, hash out. Think those cities should potentially do with HB four eleven, and we came up with the following. We think that you should not step away from HB four eleven just yet. We don't know the study costs and won't likely until June. Number two, we think there's real value in pursuing the study, even if the city eventually chooses not to follow the pa, the path of HB four eleven. The study is likely the least expensive way for the city to gain the information it needs to go forward. And number three, Weaver State is willing to partner much more closely with the city, lending our expertise and other resources. As well as hearing the city's issues, uh, going forward. Ogden is unlike any community discussing HB four eleven. Weber State is recognized nationally for finding ways to be sustainable. And we are a great partner. We can, we have been able to quickly save money, money during, doing sustainable practices, working with our partners of Rocky Mountain Power. And we've been able to save, not lose money doing that. None of the challenges I've seen documented seem insurmountable. These challenges are definitely worth solving, and I guarantee that we can help and are happy to. The cost of the study, the cost to inner-city Ogden, addressing the industrial base, finding a path that is unique to Ogden. Helping negotiate with Rocky Mountain Power, dispelling misconceptions, et cetera. Ogden doesn't have a dedicated sustainability staff like Salt Lake City. That's where we come in. We want to lend you our energy facilities experts. If they attend the meetings with the city representatives, they can help the city hash out the government's agreement. This is where we have considerable experience, and we can work fruitfully with the city of Ogden to make something great happen. There's no reason Ogden should be alone in navigating this fairly complex field. This will be a catalyst that brings us together for a very rewarding cause. And if you care about climate change, we may never again be presented with such a great cost-effective opportunity to draw down emissions like this. Electricity use uses huge percentage of our emissions profile. Think of what you can do with this simple act of deciding to work closely with us. We appreciate the hard work of our city leadership and all it does for the city of Ogden. And thank you for appreciating the partnership between Ogden City and Weber State University, and thank you for my time.
Perfect. Thank you.
Heath Sato, the time is yours. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name for the record.
Hey, everybody. Uh, Heath Sato, Ogden resident. Um, first off, I want to say thank you to the city council for, uh, taking this mask mandate seriously and speaking openly and frankly last week about it. Councilmember White, thank you for pointing out how the masks reduce transmission. Councilmember Haire, thank you for pointing out that masks are not difficult to wear and that we should follow the governor's mandate. Councilmember Nadolski, thanks for reinforcing the call to wear your bleeping mask. For people to care about others and not be a bleeping bleep, just, just to wear your bleeping mask. I love that. Uh, Councilmember Chaburka, thank you for bringing attention to the life-changing impact of this infection. And Councilmember Lopez, thank you so much for being the first council member to stand up about this months ago. Mayor Caldwell, you were silent. So since we spoke last week, the rolling weekly average is up another twenty percent per day in Utah almost. We need better leadership on this. We need people out there speaking up that this isn't some form of communism, that it's patriotic to care for your fellow American. We need this message out there every single day from our leadership. Lastly, there's a thread between COVID and housing that I want to bring up. I just read an article this weekend in the Desert News that COVID is accelerating the migration from metro areas to states like Utah. To towns like ours. I emailed all of you the link earlier today to that Desert News article. Please take a look when you can. Um, I bring, as you know, I bring up housing almost every council meeting. I've emailed the mayor multiple times. I've never heard one word from him about how or if he wants to work on ways to keep our middle and lower-income workforce in town. I don't find the idea of eventually gentrifying away all lower-income households to be acceptable. That approach to dealing with housing would lead to a very boring dead city in the future. It's short-sighted at best, and we need to keep diversity here in Ogden to keep it the unique place that it is. I've heard members of the council in work session worrying openly about these issues. But I don't have any indication the mayor is listening or leading on this in any way. I ask again, please lead on this. And, uh, since that went a little quicker than I thought it would, I'd also like to mention that, uh, the, the city's website is woefully. Uh, lame on any COVID information. There's, there's a link on the front page to a bunch of. Very dry PDFs that has information you can get just by Googling the words Utah COVID. There's nothing about what you should do, how you should deal with it, how we can do better. I, I, we just need to do better. Thanks.
David Zimmerman? And state your name for the record.
David, you'll just have to take yourself off mute.
I thought I did. Okay, you can hear me now, I hope?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Ogden City resident, uh, one of the proponents of the Clean Renewable Energy Act slash House Bill four eleven. Um, I, uh, was happy to work with several other collaborators a year ago. And to, uh, so happy at the moment when we had the majority of the city council, uh, support us. And, and not an easy question and sort of a, uh, a, a beginning. But I have to say that I'm just, I'm kind of, uh, disappointed now when I read. But I have to say that I'm just, I'm kind of disappointed now when I read an article in our local paper, the Standard Examiner, where the mayor and the city manager are both expressing a desire to drop the process when it's only just begun. This to me was disheartening and I believe disingenuous to all of us who have worked to see this happen. On top of that, I don't know why there is an issue here. I would love to see Ogden City be one of the courageous communities instead of one that's fearful and backing out. I think we need to lead on this. Ogden is a different kind of place, which is why I live here. And I would just like to see us continue to improve and do better. I think we have to all agree that we live in the real world and we do listen to science. As the earlier commenter spoke about COVID, it is a real thing. And our planet has a fever right now and the only way to reduce that is to think long term. I'd like to close my remarks urging everybody to stand steady and strong, to not give up yet. We're way too early in the process. And let me just quote a young woman who spoke in New York on September 23rd, 2019 to the UN. People are dying. Entire ecosystems are collapsing. We are in the biggest beginning of a mass extinction and all you can talk about is money and fairy tales about eternal economic growth. And to quote her at the end, how dare you? So please, Ogden, follow up. Let's not quit before we've even begun. And I hope you will do the same. Thank you.
Angel Castillo, the time is yours. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name for the record.
Good evening, councilmembers. Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. I would like to once again voice my support for Ogden participating in HB 411. I can't possibly fathom how you could walk away at this particular stage when you have the support of a Carnegie Institute offering to help shepherd you through the process, to provide the manpower that you need to do the research. I totally understand that we want to be conservative to make sure that we don't have unintended consequences with choices for some of our lower income residents, but I feel confident that Weber State University will be able to give us all the support that you need to do all the research that needs to be done to make this a reality. I I'm Marshall White led out with the Sustainability Committee. And it's imperative that you don't just check the box and say, hey, here's a committee and we're concerned about it. I mean, I need, I need my city to walk the walk. I need you to put your money where your mouth is and actually do something for our children, for our environment, and explore everything. And the fact that we are hearing that you want to bail out before you've even gotten far enough along in the process to have some actual data that says, you know, this isn't going to work for us. It just, it breaks my heart. So I urge you to lean on the resources that we have and to continue through the process for our children and for our city. And I'd also like to remind work session where you talked about housing and we need a plan. And as Councilmember Nadolski said, either you believe there's a problem or you don't believe there's a problem, then we have to stop kicking can down the road. We need an overall housing plan that includes market rate and higher income housing and the missing middle and lower income. And we need to get on board with that before we lose everybody who works in our stores and who teaches at our schools and our social workers and our police officers and our firefighters. We need to have a plan. And so I encourage you as a council to not walk away from hard things, but to continue to do the work and actually take an action step rather than talk about it and continue kicking it down the road because we don't have that kind of time. Thank you.
Kaia Hill, the time is yours. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name for the record.
Just have to take yourself off mute, Kaia.
Yep, just saw it. I saw it pop up. All right. So my name is Kaia Hill. I work at Weber State University. I was actually a recent graduate in 2019. And I am also a born and raised citizen like in and around the Ogden area. And I also was one of the Sunrise Ogden Youth Leaders who hosted the Climate Strikes last year and helped put those on. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I first want to echo all of those who have spoke before me regarding HB 411. All of the things that they've said like hit the nail right on the head exactly how I feel. I am a first generation college graduate now, yay. But I grew up in poverty pretty much my whole entire life. And I can definitely understand the the concerns that can come up about changing paying rates or whatever when it comes to HB 411 and renewable energy and all of those concerns that at least I've heard down in the woodwork. I don't think they're necessarily true. But I think from the background that I have, I think that staying in HB 411 is imperative. I am only 23 years old and climate change is here and my lifetime is going to be directly impacted by all of the terrible climate catastrophe fees that have come and are yet to come. And as a youth leader, I also know that that is the same fear and sadness and hardship that all other youth are around me who understand this issue are feeling as well. And so I just want to highlight that please use the resources being laid out to your feet. Weber State University is amazing. They've proved it again and again how much money they can save and that they make money off of this. They do not waste money on it, on saving our planet. And two, please, please, each of you, I challenge each one of you council members as well as any city members and city leaders who can actually directly impact this. I challenge you to be champions for this HB 411 and champions for youth and our future. Be champions for those who will most be impacted and affected by climate change. And I think HB 411 is the only real plan that could get us there quickly. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jen Bodine, the time is yours. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name for the record.
You hear me? Yes. So my name is Jen Bodine and I'm an Ogden resident as well as the Sustainability Manager at Weber State. And first I do want to thank everyone for their hard work on the Community Renewable Energy Act, particularly the staff who I know who have come up to have had to come up to speed really quickly on complex topics. You do have my sincerest gratitude. I read over the packet that was submitted for the work session and I have seen several concerns outlined in that packet. And I hear those concerns and I come before you to echo what Dean Farrell's comments were regarding Weber State's willingness to help. And I also want to address the packet. First of all, I totally understand the concern with the lack of information at this point, but just want to reiterate comments made previously that the city's not being asked to commit anything at all right now. No money is being requested from participating cities yet. And in fact, they are still asking for feedback on the cost allocation model. So the best solution to address this concern is to not withdraw at this point or from the conversation, but to stay engaged, ask a lot of questions and be vocal about expressing Ogden City's concerns. They want you at the table and they're definitely willing to let you help lead on this front. Concerns about costs. Again, Ogden City is not being asked to contribute anything right now. And if Ogden City feels like costs are being unfairly allocated, we do need to speak up rather than withdraw and suggest that the cost allocation model take into consideration other variables, for example, like median income, tax base of a community. We need to let the other communities know our concerns and attempt to negotiate on our behalf again before we exit. My understanding is that there are efforts to raise funds to help alleviate some of these costs. We need to be part of those discussions and engaged in those discussions. Remember that right now Ogden City currently is being asked to pay 10% of the cost. If Ogden decides to go it alone at some date in the future, the city will be on the hook for 100% of the cost. So my humble ask is to stay engaged in the process, at least until an actual decision point has been reached. I would recommend staying engaged until the study has been completed and we actually know what the cost, the full cost will be. The second thing is let WSU help. We're happy to help join in on the governance meetings and help negotiate on the city's behalf. Before you exit also, know what your alternative strategy might be. The new joint resolution states that you will work with Rocky Mountain Power, WSU and others to achieve a 2050 goal. But how will the city achieve this? Has anyone asked Rocky Mountain Power what it would take to get there? Also, if it took a legislative bill to allow this process to move forward in the first place, if Ogden City leaves this opportunity, will it take another legislative bill being passed for Ogden to be able to do it again? And don't forget that this is an opportunity. Ogden is only being asked to pay a portion of the cost and has a number of other communities on the same side of the negotiating table, working hand in hand with them right now. If we walk away, we will have to do everything completely on our own. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, Jen.
Trevor Jones, the time is now yours. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name for the record.
Hello. Am I unmuted?
Yep, I can hear you.
Thank you. Chair Chaburka and all the other council members, thank you for your time. Excuse me, I just, terrible timing. I just got a bad case of the hiccups immediately. So excuse me for that. But thank you for your time. Thank you for all of the work you guys have done on behalf of this HB 411 process. Thank you for all the work that you've asked Amy Mayby to do. She's been just absolutely tremendous throughout this whole thing. And I just wanted to echo some of the words that some of the others have said and to add my own thoughts and comments. Councilmen and councilwomen, please continue to see through this HB 411 process. It is, no one ever said it would be easy or cost free, but I think the alternative is, well, it's well defined that we're going to be looking at more and more major natural calamities, disasters, things. I mean, I've heard it said, right now we are taking a nature walk through the book of Revelation. And it is absolutely imperative that we do our part to help mitigate that in whatever way we can. And on the grand scheme of things, Ogden is a very small player, but as far as helping this HB 411 process to continue forward, we are actually a very large player. I understand that Orem and West Valley have backed out and that's really quite unfortunate. However, as others have said, I just implore you to step up and be a leader. And when everyone is, every municipality is looking at the other one and saying, are you going to go forward? Are you going to be the leader? Please, on behalf of the citizens and residents of Ogden's and concerned citizens all around the world, please be that leader. Please step up. One of the very first public comments at the environmental committee meeting was from a lady who was in a trailer and was concerned about air quality. And she understood as clearly as any of the rest of us that although our part is very small, global climate change affects local air quality. And she was very concerned about us staying in and doing our part. I thought that was absolutely fantastic because it shows what I always thought, what I can never quite, you know, put into words or make scientific or make, you know, that the poorest people get it. The poorest people understand that we're all on this together on climate change and more than people who are well off and we can insulate ourselves from the effects of this. People who are in the lower socioeconomic strata would support this the most, I truly believe. So councilmen and councilwomen, thank you. My time is up, but we appreciate all you do and we, again, please just listen to the voice of the people and continue through with this process. Thank you.
Thanks, Trevor.
Olivia Erickson, the time is now yours. Please state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
Awesome. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you so much for hearing me out today, everyone at the council. My name is Olivia Erickson. I'm a student at Weber State University studying atmospheric science. And I would just like to echo my support for HB 411 as well. As a child, if you asked me what I wanted to be when I grew up, I would have told you a mom. And now due to the research that I've done with climate change and how it will impact our earth in the next few hundred years, I've decided that that is something I will not pursue now because I am terrified of the world that I will be leaving to my children. And I think that a lot of my generation feels that way and is terrified of what it will come to. And we are disappointed in the actions and I would just really urge you to follow through with HB 411 as well. Everything that everyone has said has really has been a really great comment, you know, and I just think that we also need, I just wanted to echo that and say I'm in full support of HB 411 and I would urge you to please follow through on it. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Thanks for your comment.
Edward McRae, the time is yours. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name for the record.
You do have to take yourself off mute as well. There you go. Yes, there you go.
I think everything that was said before me was correct. I think it's an opportunity for Ogden, but I would like to make a comment about the program called the Berkeley Lab Building Efficiency Campaign drives 95 million in annual energy savings. Buildings, according to Natalia Pavleski, I will send you this website. Buildings account for 40% of the energy used in the United States with a total bill well over $400 billion per year, said scientist Jessica Granderson, Berkeley Lab Research Deputy of the Building, Technology and Urban Systems Division. I think the idea of saving, of having sustainable energy is such a good idea that I don't think we are going to be able to avert it. It's going to happen in the marketplace regardless of what we do in government. But it's kind of important for us to think about maybe helping it along. And I think that would be a way in which we could lead the project to sustainable energy. That was my first point. The second point I have is in Ogden Canyon, there's been a couple of purchases. The purchase, the last one I know of, was the Rock House in the Lewis Camp. The Rock House is not part of the Cobble's Lewis Camp HOA. It's a beautiful site. It's a beautiful big building with 11 acres in the back. I wondered why or how Ogden City was able to purchase this. It's not that I'm against it. It's just that it seems like it's outside of the city limits. And I was And, um, I was wondering if you had so much money that you could afford $500,000 for this particular property? Because, uh, it has 11 acres in the back of the house and it's quite, uh, quite beautiful. Uh, my question is, how can you afford it and should you really buy it? Or how, how did you buy it? Thank you very much and, um, happy Thanksgiving and holidays for you.
Oh, thank you. You too. Stay well.
Bob Swatzky, the time is yours. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name for the record.
Yes, uh, I'm Bob Swatzky. I've been a Weber County homeowner since 1986. Hello?
Hey, we can, we can hear you.
Okay, yes, I've been a Weber County homeowner since 1986. I, I have three questions. I would like each of the council members to respond. The first question is, do you, wait, I forgot. We had solar panels installed in our home about five years ago when the federal rebate was still in effect. I'd like to know if any of you have had home solar power installed. If yes, why? If not, why not? Third, would you personally recommend solar power to a friend or relative for their home? Uh, in conclusion, I'm disappointed, uh, with the Rocky Mountain Power decision to lower the re, rebate or whatever they call the discount on, on energy usage. Thank you. It will, it will discourage homeowners from buying into the system. Thanks. Okay.
Is that all you want?
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any, any other hands raised at this time. Wait another second, just in case. Oh, I spoke too soon.
Carrie France, the time is yours. Excuse me, Chair, sorry.
I was just gonna say we have so many folks, but yeah, go ahead, Carrie. Here, you'll just have to take yourself off, off mute as well.
All right. Is it working now? Sorry about that.
Oh, no problem.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you for the time and thanks for, um, thanks for allowing us to comment on this. I am at Weber State University. I'm an earth scientist and my expertise is on sea ice and climate change in the near mountain west. Two different things, but two aspects of climate change. And more importantly, I live and I work here. I'm a resident. I hope someday raise my family here. And the future of energy in Ogden is really important to me. Um, and I want to echo what Jen Bodine said just a minute ago about Ogden's involvement in the Community Renewable Energy Act. You have access to experts here in Ogden, at Weber State, in the community, um, who are really eager to help Ogden figure out how to transition to renewable energy as soon as possible in a way that makes sense for us, in a way that is good for people of all economic incomes, um, that helps Ogden grow, that's good for our community. Please take advantage of us and please make decisions with all the information available. And I would ask that, um, that we not withdraw from the Community Renewable Energy Act until we actually know what the details are going to look like. So, uh, thank you for your time. Thanks for representing us and that's all I have to say for now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Alice Mulder, the time is yours. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name for the record.
Hello, everybody. It's Alice Mulder. Um, I'm a resident in Ogden and I too am at Weber State University. I direct the Sustainability Practices and Research Center there and I'm a faculty in the Geography, Environment and Sustainability Department. In short, I definitely want to echo what has been said, um, about sticking with the process of HB 411. I really commend the council and the city for, um, signing up to this process to see what it would be about, how it might work. And I do think it is really, honestly, I want work as, as a larger group of communities, making up a really significant portion of electricity users in Utah to, to, um, nudge, that's probably not a strong enough word, but to really encourage you, the utility to make the shift toward renewable energy, which, which is coming down the pipeline, but we need to do it as soon as we can. The other point I would make is to say, um, that I, I absolutely value and appreciate the concerns that were echoed in the packet for the, the working session today about, um, paying attention to lower income households and, and costs and potential obstacles or, or issues there. But I also think we have to think, um, broader when we think about costs, not just economic cost, but, um, the other costs that come with, with climate change. And I think you've heard some of them in the comments today, coming from youth and fear and insecurity. But also it is those who are least capable of coping with things like heat waves, um, who, who suffer the most and those are lower income households. So I just hosted a presentation today and at a series at Weber State where an environmental economist was talking about, about the costs and, and very, very carefully measuring real costs, real benefits. Um, but when we talk about cost, as he said, it's not just the financial, you also have to look at what the other social costs are. So I think that's something that I would encourage the council, um, and everyone who's invested in this project to be thinking about for sure. So thank you very much for your time and, um, the work that has been gone into this and particularly, uh, Amy Mayby, I know you've, you've been thrown into a rather complicated process, but, um, but do, please do take advantage of the, the offer of help that's been, um, promoted by Weber State and are put forward by Weber. And at least stick with the process until there is a decision point. So thanks so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Alice.
Yael Pedrosa, the time is yours. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name for the record.
Hi, um, my name's Yael Pedrosa and I'm a resident of Ogden. Um, I feel so many good points have been made already in regards to HB 411, so I'm not going to reiterate them. But, um, I'm just going to say that, um, with the beauty that surrounds us, I spend minute, uh, so much of my time outdoors and it's such a shame to see the disgusting air in the winter and to see you would expect so much better quality air in our mountain city. And I just don't think that we can afford not to do this. I think we owe it to our future generations, um, to do whatever we can. It's our responsibility to do whatever we can, especially if we have help to do so. I think we need to do our part and I just will leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for commenting. We really appreciate all the community engagement about this topic and many others that were mentioned. I know that we all received an email from Bob, um, about the solar panels, so we can all just respond in our own time to him. I'm just looking back to see if there's any other questions that people had that we might want to respond to. We are continuing the discussion about HB 411 after the public meeting. So I encourage you to stick around for the work session continuation to hear. And all we had so far was a presentation, but we'll, you'll hear more of the council member discussion at that time. So anything anybody wanted to respond to? I don't see anything on my list right now to give a direct response to. Great. Um, well, Mayor Caldwell, would you like to make any?
I, I'm sorry. I, I, I couldn't hear what you just said about the work session. Did you say we're going to talk about four, HB 411 at the work session?
We were going to continue after the public meeting, just for a few minutes, so that council members could ask questions and have a little discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Caldwell, would you like to make any general comments?
I have a handful of comments I'd like to make. First of all, in regards to House Bill 411, we have agreed and I've talked at length about, we agree with the intent of that. It's just the implementation and the timing of the implementation for that. And for those that are listening, you know, I was the one that rode my bike to work every single day for a full year to talk about active transportation, more opportunity to, um, more access to opportunities and everything else. So I believe fully in that. But one solution doesn't fit every single commu- community. And so we're looking at that and as technology comes available, we believe in the intent of that legislation. It just takes time for us to make sure that it fits for our community. And so to put everybody to rest, we really do believe in the intent of House Bill 411. It's just going to take some time to do. And I've done that on, on my own, having ridden my bike to work every single day for a year, because I really believe that that's where we're going and that's what we need to do. That's how we've designed our downtown. If you've looked at our Make Ogden program and, and planning guide and master plan, it's all in there. And so we really believe in that. It just is in terms of timing and technology and everything else. And so I, I appreciate those comments. Appreciate everybody that's been involved in that. Appreciate everybody that is passionate about this because we share all of those same feeling. It's just a matter of timing and economics and implementation. Uh, I do want to thank Monty and Jay and the crew for what they've done to bring our Christmas village together. It's not going to be the same Thanksgiving week any of us have ever seen. We've all been in the Christmas parade and the Thanksgiving parade and enjoyed that time we get to collect and, and come together. Um, it'll be a lot different this year, but they've still worked extremely hard to do that. And I want to make sure that they know how much we appreciate them. I want to congratulate the Furtons and their family for being the mayor of Christmas Village. They're gonna have a great time doing it. It'll be entirely different, like everything else has been this year. And then honestly, I really do want to congratulate Mara Brown. She has worked tirelessly for this city for a number of years and I've had a number of notes and texts from a whole bunch of other people. She is really, uh, going to be a great, uh, uh, deputy director, director in our team. And we really appreciate what she's done and what she'll bring to the team. And I appreciate your support of Mara Brown. She's going to be amazing and we thank you all for that. And then lastly, we don't get to meet next week and we don't get to have a Christmas parade. We don't get to have the lights turn on like we've done in the past and everything else. But I, I hope everybody can be thankful for where they live and, and what we're doing and, and everything that we have around us. We live in an amazing community and, um, Thanksgiving's that time for giving thanks, even though this year seems really crazy. And, uh, uh, everybody wants to punt 2020, but I am thankful for all of you. I'm thankful for where we live. I'm thankful for our families. Thankful for our safety and the people that keep us safe. And, uh, I hope that we can all go into next week with that gratitude in our hearts because it's been one amazing year and I appreciate all of you.
Well, I don't know how we can all follow that, but thank you. I hope that your family has a wonderful holiday as well. Any other council member have, council members have comments?
Chair, if there's no other comments, I, I guess, uh, I, I don't know quite how to say it, but I, I appreciate all the feedback we've got on HB 411. I'm looking forward to the continued conversation. I have to agree with something the mayor said, that we, we believe in the intent of HB 411. But even more than that, I think we, I think we believe in the goal that we set to have 100% sustainability by a certain time. And that, um, that's a goal that matters for our community. I, um, I personally have a, um, graduate degree in, in the sciences and I have committed my, my professional life to natural resource stewardship and, um, you know, environmental improvement and sustainability. And so I, I don't think that, I don't want people to think that, um, us signaling concern is, is us not being open minded. I think, um, I think that there's some sincerity to the fact that we're, um, signaling that we have some concerns and there, I think that the I hope the amount of respect for some of the concerns that we have with the uncertainties that are before us, the, um, some of the things that we're hearing from other communities and that, uh, for me personally, I think I might, I just might have to take up that offer from the Weber State professors to, um, to help me better understand this. Because, um, I truly want to understand it and I do truly want to reach that goal. And, um, I want to, I want to understand why HB 411 is the only option to get us there. And, um, and if that's not the case, what is the, the option to get us there? I don't know. I just don't see this as a closed book or a closed mind. I just see this as a, a deliberate and thoughtful, set of public officials are trying to understand the information before us and make a good decision for the community. It's not, um, I don't know. I, I'd hate to see politics and demonize any of, any of us or anyone, um, for just trying our best and, and trying to wrap our minds around it. So if the community is willing and if the people that have spoken tonight are willing, um, to, to truly help us understand, and I think that they are, I think I'll, I'll have to reach out to a couple of those folks and, and maybe sit and, and ask some candid questions and get candid answers that I can help me understand better, so I can make a better choice. But, uh, I, I don't think that means that, that I'm a closed book or a hard no or closed minded. I just, it's just a dang freaking hard topic. It's hard to, um, make a, a choice and that feels like I'll leave a faith to some degree at some times. So I look, I'll, I'll, I'll put the rest of my comments to the, the rest of our discussion. But, um, I hope people will at least accept that we're trying our hardest to make the best choices that we can and that we're people that love Ogden as much as anybody and, um, and that they'll give us some support to do our best.
And thanks for those comments, Councilmember Nadolski. Um, yeah, I would just suggest too, that the Sustainability Committee also offered to, you know, talk through some of our concerns and help us think about it. So that might be something you want to think about too, because those folks have already volunteered to do that. Yes, Councilmember Lopez.
Chair, I just, I just wanna echo, uh, the comments that, uh, Member Nadolski just made. Uh, and, uh, because we have a work session and we still have some work to do. I won't, I won't speak long right now. I'll just say, um, I just wonder if we need to, um, if we need to figure out a way to have some kind of a work session or a meeting with, um, uh, with the, uh, Sustainability Committee and with Weber State representatives and, 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 and work together to explore and to learn, as, as Councilwoman Nadolski was saying, to learn what those options might be. Uh, I, I could talk a lot more about why I feel that that would be a good thing to do. But I'll wait, um, until we move on to the work session. But, uh, that's just in my mind. And my mind is, I mean, I, I agree with, uh, all the statements that were made about the importance to, uh, do something and to not miss on, on a potential opportunity. But I also share the concerns that we all talked about when this was brought out to us, that we feel blindsided by the mystery of what this could be. Uh, and so, but yeah, just, just, just for whatever it's worth, for all the people that spoke, whether some of them might, might stay for the work session or not, uh, this, it, the issue is very important to me and I know it's very important to all of us. And I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Chair, can I take a few minutes?
Please.
As I recall, the, the vote went five to two for council to start this process. And has been outlined in our work session, two cities have opted out. But it must be, I appreciate the comments from our citizens and, and the information that has, uh, they've given us about, a little bit about 411. they've given us about a little bit about four eleven. We hope we can get some more. But it's a positive entity for us that we are still gathering information. And I think that's, that's the plus side of it. We have, as mentioned before, we have a lot of work to do. We're, we're supposedly at the starting line. We're not at the finish line. And we're process through this race. And hopefully we can gather information and and direction that will make the we'll make down the road, but we're still looking at climate change. We're still looking at how we can improve the environment. And that's, that's a positive entity. The other aspect that I would like to mention is that it's not hard to wear a mask. And when we do, my wife and I, we always wear a mask because we're concerned not only about ourselves, but about other individuals who we come in contact with. And this pandemic is real. And we're not giving up our rights when I wear my mask. I am actually exercising my right because that's a right that I have. And so I would encourage everyone to wear their mask. The other aspect is is that we're going into the holidays. Thanksgiving is coming up and we want to greet our families and but I'd encourage you to, if you're making preparations for the Thanksgiving and Christmas, that you should do your shopping in Ogden. And that you shop those businesses that are established here in the city. And also on Thanksgiving, if if you can, maybe help someone else that needs some help for Thanksgiving and for Christmas. I think those two elements there would enhance our relationship to others in our, in our community. The, and so I would say to stretch out your arms and and not hug them, but offer the the suggestion of help to those who need the help. And that's all I have to say.
I like it. I agree.
Chair, if I could just, can I follow up with that? Because I was going to say, where are your blinking mask?
Yeah, just say it at the end of every meeting.
Yeah. Hey, I just also want to say that, you know, one of the things, you know, I I kind of think that Thanksgiving is just another Thursday and we can do it again, maybe in March. So maybe while we're having a hard time keeping these numbers low and people out of the ICUs and all of that, maybe we just say it's just another Thursday and we're going to do Thanksgiving in March. So maybe, you know, this year's kind of really already messed up, so maybe let's just keep it messed up and let's not do Thanksgiving, but maybe do it. I I propose in March.
We can do it again in March too, but yeah, with other people then, only by ourselves and our own households now. Yeah, I agree.
Well, things have changed. And I'd like to propose that we make an end to twenty twenty. Let's go right into twenty twenty one and start all over.
Do over. Wait, well, we have a meeting that's going to be continuing after this, so I propose we adjourn this one, take about a ten minute break and then come back. Anybody like to make a proposal to adjourn?
We're adjourned. Second.
Right, on favor?
Aye.
New post? Great, see you back here in ten minutes.